First thing we'll do is pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure, I'm happy to. Alright, so our first order of business.
I am very pleased to introduce Beth Gannon as the interim principal for EES. Beth is a veteran educator and administrator with experience as an instructional leader and in building management. She will begin her tenure on December 2nd and her contract will run through June 30th. The search for the permanent EES principal position will begin in March of 2025. David Crane has offered his resignation to be effective November 30th. We are extremely happy to have her join us. We had a great meet and greet. She was very gracious with her time and even joined the JSC meeting yesterday remotely and still came today, so that's good. But, you know, to really, you know, kudos to her to try to get a feel for what is going on in the union as a whole and to identify who some of the players are. So we're very happy to have her join. She's been able to come to the school and will be all in after the Thanksgiving recess.
Did you want to say anything?
You do not need to say anything, but I wanted to give you the opportunity if you wanted to.
I just want to say thank you, Becky, for being here this evening. I'm really excited to be joining Irving. And I can't wait to get started.
Excellent. Thank you, welcome. Alright, next is public hearing. Do we have any public hearing tonight? Not seeing any. Alright, we'll move on. We need to approve the minutes, the October 15th minutes.
I will approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Nope. Alright, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Onto warrants. We can take them individually or as a batch? Your preference?
Take them all together if you want. Do you want to separate payroll and vendors?
We can, if that's what you want to make as your motion.
So I'll make motion to approve payroll, warrant, 108, 109, and 110.
Second that.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then I'll make a motion to approve vendor invoices, EES 1012, EES FS 1012, EES 1014, EES 1015, E secondary 1105, and E secondary 1106.
So we're doing all of them, okay.
Oh, is that okay?
Nope, that's fine. Okay. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Alright, well we ran along. Do we have any gifts that need a vote?
No gifts, we have a few grants for vote.
Yep, I'll get to that next. Okay, so do you want to talk about the grants?
So we have the FY25 IDEA grants of $1,452,961, which will go towards out of district placements, and FC 262, $1,602, which will go for the early childhood paraprofessional. We also have three title grants, Title I for 305 for $40,092, FC 140 for $4,247, and FC 309 for $10,000.
Okay, so we need to vote to accept these grants.
I move we accept the grants.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Alright, Gil Montague, representative.
Good evening. So Jen Elcorn was able to attend and she's actually at the meeting tonight. So I'm going to give her report and then I'll go right into my Frank County Tech School report. So the Turners Falls High School National Honor Society induction was held on 11/14. There were 22 inductees, three were former Irving students, Ethan Ikorn, Noah Koloje, and Cameron Johnson. They had a record number of applicants this year and over 40 students applied. The finance director provided the following information about Irving tuition. The Irving tuition calculation is based on a prior year's expenses and enrollment. When we billed the 25 budget, we anticipated 10 students more than our current enrollment and so we have a deficit in that revenue line. We budgeted $980,000 for our fiscal '25 budget, which is already a significant decline from the prior year as we anticipated lower enrollment due to several factors. We expect to see a revenue deficit of over $200,000 in this line. We had a large class graduate last year, saw a significant number of students leave for Tech, combined with a small incoming 7th grade. However, due to the move outs during the fiscal '24 and the factors detailed above, the Irving enrollment decline is considerable. Regular ed tuition is relatively flat. Well, sped tuition per student is up to 39,500 to 44,236. As you can see, there's a typical large drop off of student numbers between 8th and 9th grade when the students choose to attend the Tech School, but in fiscal year '25, the number was even more dramatic as less than half of our Irving 8th graders remained enrolled. You will also notice that we had 12 seniors last year and we only have five this year. The 11-12 meeting was not posted in time due to the holidays, so it's been rescheduled for the evening and that's where Jen is. So Gil Montague is concerned with the drop of enrollment, the lack of students, and then Tech is taking a large portion of them away. So also, the Turners Falls High School Mean Girls production is happening this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 2:00 PM. And Jen just texted me and says they got a preview and it looks fabulous. So if you're looking for something to do this weekend, please consider going over there. So I'll roll right into my Frank County Tech School, put on my other hat.
Hang on, let's just make sure there's no questions on that before you roll into the next one.
I do have a question.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand. Does a drop of students, and so does the tuition amount we pay drop?
Yes, so when they built their budget last year, they anticipated 10 more students coming over. So in their budget, they proposed the $980,000. When they're building their budget, they include our tuition in. And they won't meet that because we have less students than they anticipated coming in. So they're already at a deficit for this current year.
Okay, so had we planned on paying for those 10 students that we expected?
We budgeted it, or you budgeted for it, and that's what was approved at town meeting. So there'll be extra funds in the secondary level because they won't charge as much.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure they can give you an updated projection on what it's going to be if you call the business office.
Okay, just answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, Tech School hat. So the last meeting was very brief. Freshmen are picking their final shops and will start after the first of the year or just before the break in December. So the Little Drummer Craft Fair is happening this Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00 PM at the Tech School. Always an awesome craft fair, I urge you to go. We are moving forward with the feasibility study for the new school and the school committee got a tour of the new veterinary building. And they are looking for a veterinarian, for an instructor. And that's about it. Any questions?
Nope, thank you. Alright, do we have a collaborative educational services update?
We do not because we have not met again since the last time. So the next meeting is Wednesday, December 11th at 6:00 PM and they are still doing hybrid model, either in Northampton or virtual.
Alright. Do we have a regionalization update?
At this time, Jen and I were unable to make the meeting, but we've been keeping up with the minutes. So they keep scheduling them on dates that I already have a meeting scheduled, so.
Alright, we are moving right along. I love this. Alright, capital planning committee update.
Shannon, I might need your help here.
Okay.
Because I don't have the right.
Let me pull up my notes.
I don't have the right ones.
So bear with me while I pull up my notes. That's okay.
I would go on, but Superintendent reported his next topic agenda.
Alright, I'm ready for that one. So we are looking at, we have some capital improvement. We've been working with Brian and with the capital planning from the town. We have some costs that we anticipate will be extensive. Will reach over the 1.5 million threshold. Brian has really been a great resource for us as he's walked us through. And Caitlin, you were in all those meetings, so if I'm forgetting anything. We are going to, we have a roof project that needs to be done. There are some spaces where the roof with the addition was joined and it's just reached its capacity. And we also need some HVAC work, so we're really looking to combine those. We have a meeting, Caitlin, Brian, and I attended a webinar with the MSBA because that is the Mass School Building Authority. To, we know a couple of things need to be done. We need to get an OPM to facilitate the project. Am I right so far? Okay, and we also need to hire a designer. Those are sort of like the first steps. We are pursuing MSBA to see like what is their timeline? They have some accelerated repair project money. What does that look like? What is the pecking order? So we went to a webinar, we got some good information, but the best piece was we got a contact. So we actually have a meeting tomorrow, Caitlin, Brian, and I, with the MSBA. Brian helped me draft a letter with some very specific questions. We're going to meet in a Google workspace tomorrow and we are going to get answers to those questions about, is this something that we can have MSBA funds? And what does it look like when we go to, do they have requirements for who we hire to be eligible for their funds? So we know that we need to hire an OPM and we need to hire a project design person, but we want to make sure that we are meeting any requirements for those positions that will still allow us to be eligible for MSBA funds, if that makes sense. So I believe what we're asking for is permission to take the next steps in procuring a designer and an OPM, but I don't have my notes for sure.
That's what I was thinking too, but we don't have dollar amounts yet because we were still waiting to hear what.
So you may want to push the vote.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
You may want to push the vote because we have the MSBA meeting tomorrow.
Okay, perfect.
And we meet on their schedule, not ours, so.
Nope, that works. Yeah, so I know we were talking about what we think. We were also going to hear from them to see what they thought a reasonable number was. But the town is aware that this request is going to come through and we are in the process of once we kind of agree on a number and get the vote from the committee, if that's what we want to do to move forward, working with Caitlin, to work with the town to submit that application process of what they're asking. We also talked about the sidewalk doorway in the back entrance being repaired. So Eric is working with Glenn to talk about that and see what kind of project that looks like. And then we're also contacting a playground inspector, is that the right term for them? Who can do a walkthrough of the playground to look at any safety concerns, issues, possible updates, you know, guidelines and all that, to get a better idea of what the playground is going to possibly need and what kind of shape that's in, so that we can stay ahead of that as well because that is aging. And so we're getting to that point where that's going to be another capital planning thing, so.
And right now, there are a lot of grants that are earmarked for playgrounds. So if we can capitalize on that window with any projects, so we're trying to build that. I did find my notes. So the questions we are specifically asking for clarity in tomorrow are, how can we determine what percentage of the project cost would be eligible for reimbursement? With the scope that I've roughly described, I did in more detail to them. What are the requirements, if any, for an OPM and project designer that MSBA would need? The town to ensure is in place so that we would be eligible for MSBA funding? And can they provide us clarifications around the timeline for this type of repair project to be considered? So those were the specific questions.
Great. Coming back to the playground, I know that the, the.
Surface.
The surface, right, of that cushy material has been deteriorating, so.
Yeah.
If nothing else, that's, you know, needs to be done.
For sure. Yeah, so I think that was probably, that kind of covered what our meeting was. Our next meeting is also December 11th at 1:00 PM here at the school. And so we'll not vote tonight and hopefully have more information for the next school committee meeting. But we're trying to meet monthly and we're trying to meet before the next school committee meeting so that way we can provide updates and vote if needed.
Yep, that makes sense. Okay, so we're going to table the two votes until our next school committee meeting in December.
Correct.
Okay, then you're up.
Alright, so I'm just happy to introduce Beth Gannon. We are in the beginning stages of budget development for FY26. Principals have presented their draft goals for this school year to the superintendent. I will be working with Beth when she comes on board because she's going to be a little bit behind the eight ball through no fault of her own. And I will align it with our goals that we have for the school and for within the union. I presented my goals to the joint school committee last night and they were accepted with a few additional information, but the goals themselves were accepted. So those will be, I'll be making those public shortly. And they're aligned to the district priorities and the information that I shared in my entry plan. Collective bargaining negotiations will be beginning for EES and two other union districts. EES, as part of the union, we were able to secure a membership to the Massachusetts Partnership for Youth for all schools and all staff. MPY is a nonprofit that provides training, collaboration, and programming to promote health and safety of students. It is committed to bringing cutting-edge information and training to teachers and endeavors to provide solution-oriented, community-based, multidisciplinary approaches to foster mental and behavioral health. They're focused on a lot of the initiatives around diversity, inclusion, equal access. I'll be frank, I was surprised that we weren't already members of that because every school district around is. It's a great resource, especially when you're looking for professional development opportunities for those staff who don't always, there's always a plethora of professional development around reading and math and really.
School counselors.
School counselors, nurses, being able to have access to that programming. In the past, it's been cost prohibitive because they have a very reasonable fee, but they bill by district. And so we would each be incurring that. And so I was able to work with them and they have billed us as one union. And so we were able to split that cost four ways. So we're very excited. I know some of our nurses have already signed up for some trainings and so I'm very happy to have brought that. We have some state and legislative updates. The circuit breaker funding, this is from the Mass Association of School Superintendents. The circuit breaker funding, which is the funding that subsidizes special education costs, came in at rates that left a significant gap in funding across the Commonwealth. About 60 to $64 million gap. A supplemental budget is being prepared to address that. In a joint statement, the Mass Association of School Superintendents and Mass Association of School Committees are asking members to reach out to their legislators and bring attention to the gap and advocate for fully funding the Circuit Breaker and the Student Opportunity Act, which are priorities for fiscal year '26, which is anticipated to be pretty challenging fiscally. Their proposal is to use the Fair Share Amendment, which is commonly referred to as the millionaire's tax, to use that surplus to fully fund those initiatives. But everyone is trying to get a piece of that pie, so they're asking people to write to their legislators. There was a joint meeting by the two groups mentioned before to focus on budgeting, regulatory. to focus on budgeting, regulatory changes. And highlighted topics included diversity, inclusion, refiling the Student Discipline Bill and legislative advocacy platform that they're rolling out to keep the public in a user-friendly way informed around state initiatives that involve schools. So that's what I have.
Great.
You're welcome. Any questions?
Could I ask, how might we as a school committee, if the committee wants to, if they want to, have a letter drafted in support of filling the Circuit Breaker gap? Along with everybody else, if other places are doing similar stuff?
I was asked this by a different district school committee and I did share with them as individual members and they could decide if they wanted to send them individually or as a committee a copy of the letter that I sent that has some language. I'm happy to share that for your use, if that's helpful. This... They did not... They had a sort of a template letter for superintendents, but I did not see one for school committees. So I think that in Swift River was the committee who asked. They were just going to tweak the language that I had used to reflect that it was the school committee advocating. So I'm happy to share that with you and you can use it as you see fit.
Okay.
What would you like to do with that as a committee?
Are you asking if we want to send one joint letter or individual letters?
Yeah, I'd just soon send a joint letter for the school committee if you want to. If you had a 64 million dollar gap, somebody's going to have to pay the money or not have the services. And when you have a situation where you must have the services, supporting this, filling that gap seems like a wise thing for a school committee to do as a committee. If I'd move that we do that, we're not sure how to accomplish it.
Okay. Did... Let me just ask a question. Did Swift River have an opinion as to whether they thought the impact would be greater as a one-body letter or individual letter?
They voted for me to send it to the chair and the chair was going to tweak it and send it on behalf of the school committee.
So they felt one-body?
They voted it as the school committee.
Okay.
You willing to do that as chair?
Yeah, yes.
I will send that to you.
I'd move that we do that.
Okay. Caitlin, do you agree?
That works.
Okay.
And that was all for you, right?
That was it.
Okay, great. All right, Director Finance and Operations.
So last night, the budget personnel, you made some committee met. They voted to recommend the Union 28 budget to the Joint Supervisor Committee, who voted to accept the budget for FY '26. The October 1st enrollment counts came in and the portion of the Union 28 budget that's allocated to Irving is 24.69%. Compared to last year's portion of 25.01%, there's a decrease of 0.32%. That's based on the five-year rolling average that was adopted four years ago. So we're up to a four-year rolling average. And those are all based on enrollment amounts. The Irving Elementary and Secondary budget drafts, I sent to you about a week ago. And the what is different about this, and I can present it kind of on the big screen, if you'd like me to, is the grant expenditures and revenues are now pulled out from the general presentation pages. So what you're seeing in the presentation pages will be the just the town appropriation amounts. And then the grants are listed in a separate portion of the budget to show how we're using those grant amounts, but they're not listed as a expenditure or a revenue in the presentation or budget pages. The biggest unknown factors to the FY '26 budget are around the contract negotiation and special education expenses. The overall percentage currently to the town appropriations is 0.1% increase for Irving Elementary and a 3.4% decrease for Irving Secondary. Would you like me to present the whole budget document now?
I'm sorry, when you say present it, present it.
I can probably try to figure out how to plug it in so you can see the screen.
Oh, you mean on the big screen?
Where we can follow along on the pages.
Okay. I'm... Dan, what do you... I can get it here, but how about you? Would you rather be up on the screen?
I can just follow along and listen, it'd be okay, I think.
Okay, I think we're okay.
Okay. So the first page is the budget summary. And I had to kind of write some notes in here because the way the budget looks this year and moving forward is without the, again, without the uses of funding, including those grant expenses or Circuit Breaker. So it appears that there is a decrease in what we're paying, but it's really just taking out the funding and what we're spending out of those specific lines. And the sources of funding now under the anticipated value, does the grants offsetting the net total is zeroed out because they're not in there as an expense and they're not in there as a revenue. So the amount remaining for town appropriations is an increase of 0.1%. There's been some shifts in some of our special education expenses. And so some of them were in the elementary or now in the secondary. Some of the secondary ones are no longer there. And the increase, I think, for the elementary is relatively low due to that. And then also in communication with Gil Montague, some of our expenses for the secondary tuition and the secondary budget have decreased, I think this year actually, and kind of piggybacking on the Gil Montague report. It's lower this year, expected to climb a bit next year, but still lower than we have had in previous years. So and then for... It's kind of in the note section, but in the asterisks on the right side of the budget are some indicators of what we spend some of those lines on or why you may see an increase or a decrease, especially in lines like line 35. There is a relative... We took out the REAP funding, which is our federal funding for rural education. That's moved to the grant section of the page. Or beneath that, the $25,000 for Title I salary, that's been taken out of the presentation page, this page. And instead, that expenditure is removed from that section and moved to the grant page. On the... On page four, you'll see some other pieces that have moved to grants, like for Rural Aid. We're going to use Rural Aid this year for the fuel costs and for the school power costs. Those are moved to the grant page also. And for special education tuition for other schools, line 101, that... A lot of that port... That line was moved to IDA funding. And we've also have some movement from one budget, the elementary, to the secondary budget. So on page six, that is an overview of how we are... And that aligns with the pages before that. That is how we are planning on using our Circuit Breaker, Title I, Title II, Title IV, IDEA and Rural Aid and REAP funding. So I guess in previous budgets, it has been we have these revenue sources in grants, Circuit Breaker, Rural Aid, and we just use it as a revenue source to offset what is the town appropriation. But now we're separating it so that you're able to see exactly how we plan on using those funds. For the Irving Secondary budget, page eight, that's the last page. Some of the special education expenses have moved over to the secondary budget. We are for... Actually, for elementary and secondary education, the exact amount of increase is... will be determined in February. So there may be a change to the budget at that time if the percent increase is less than the 5.5% limit of what it could increase to. And in line 13, for regular tuition public schools, that's based in communications with Gil Montague. A lot of our Circuit Breaker money, we are choosing to use towards the secondary budget. So for lines 15, we're planning on using $80,000 in Circuit Breaker money for that line. So an overall decrease of 3.4% for secondary education. Do you have questions about the first draft of the budget?
Go ahead, keep starting.
I'll go after you.
Is the fiscal year '26 budget Circuit Breaker money affected by this gap in Circuit Breaker that we're talking about? Could be.
Not... It's based on our most recent what we were getting for Circuit Breaker. So I don't anticipate... There is still probably is a gap in what our expenditures are to what we're receiving this year. But we're going to kind of monitor because there are some things in place this year that could reduce our expenditures, which would also reduce our Circuit Breaker. So they will adjust through the year. And if we determine that we're not going to receive the amount of funding we are this year, then we could see that amount decrease because we're, you know, not going to budget for money that we don't anticipate receiving.
So even if that's the case, if I'm reading this right, we're anticipating at this point, things can change between now and final budgets.
Yes.
We're looking at 3.4% discount drop in secondary.
Yes.
And a 0.1% increase.
0.1% increase for Irving.
And for Irving Elementary, okay. Sounds like good news to me in general. I know you are more familiar with the details than I am because I haven't been here that long, so I'll leave questions about the details. But I just wanted to check the bottom-line stuff. Thank you.
A couple of questions that I had, like on line 24. It just... I know it's been seven and then we're keeping it at seven, but we hit 5,600 a couple of years ago, but other than that, it's been under five. I just was, are we anticipating that it will get to that seven? Do you feel like we need the seven? I know it's only like 20... I know it's only like $2,000. But I know last year and some of the other years, it's been brought up of like why we're cushioning certain areas. So I just marked some of those.
No, it's a good question. So we were informed last year that our retainer for legal services worth is going to increase. We haven't seen that increase in invoices yet, but we'd still like to keep it at what we were informed that we would have to.
Okay, perfect. And then something that just... Another thing of like watching the increase was our copier maintenance. It's almost like doubled in the last three years. And I just don't know, is that just for the two copiers that are here? Are there... Like what's included in that? Is that something we should possibly look at? That is this going to keep doubling over the next couple of years? And then our copiers are going to cost as much as staff at some point? You know what I mean? Because we're getting up to, you know, almost $12,000 or a little over $11,000. And it used to be like five. So I just wasn't sure what our plan was with that.
So when I looked into it, we have two different copiers that have different amounts, the one in the main office and the one outside the library. And the budgets kind of match what we have right now. But you're one of three schools right now that are kind of questioning when the end of that copier agreement is done and what we can look into for other options.
Okay, so it's more of it's like a contracted thing that we don't really have a choice about right now. However, it's being flagged by everyone of what are we doing with our copiers?
Yes.
Well, that's copier maintenance. We have a copier lease, line 52. That is a... That is a contract with a lease.
This is saying contract with...
Yeah, our maintenance is also contracted.
Yeah.
And so we contracted with them and they charge us $11,050 regardless of how many times we use them or what we use them for?
I think the billing is different based on the number of copies. One of the lines is for the contract with the copy machines because we lease those.
Right, that's line 52.
And the other is for the paper and other associated costs, I believe. But I would have to look into the invoices.
Okay, so let's put that on the radar then. Because copier maintenance, to me, wouldn't be supplies. It would be when things go wrong with it and need to be repaired. So if that's not the case, I'd like a better definition of what copier maintenance is. And to Caitlin's point, like that's... That seems like an awful lot of money for two copiers. And is that even both copiers or is that just one of the two?
I think that's for both copier agreements. I don't know how many copiers. I'd have to check.
I mean, if the whole lease is only $6,000, why are we paying double that on maintenance? It seems like we could do something different, like buy a new one. We're cheaper than maintaining the ones we have.
Can I ask, is there a manufacturer recommended routine maintenance stuff that people do? Or do we just call them up when something breaks? How do we determine? They just say, "Send us all the money"?
I don't know.
Who is this... I'm going to ask Shannon so I don't keep putting you on the spot. Who kind of takes care of the copiers? Is that the IT department? Is that the central office? Not central office, but the front office?
Typically goes through the front office. And I would have to check on how specifically this school works. But typically, there's a maintenance where they come in every so often. Not in addition to, "It's broken, please come in", but just to try to enhance the longevity and we pay for that. And then there's in our contracted rate about if they come for repairs.
Thank you.
Yeah, it just seems double the cost of the lease just seems really high. We can look into it.
Another just increase, and I know we have next to... Oh, sorry, I should start with the line item. 39 contracted services. I know this is something that we have been looking at and hoping that with the additional staff that we've hired would help with some of those needs. But are we seeing the contracted needs still be really high? Or is there a shift in what that need is going to be because we still don't have the psychologist filled? Like just kind of gauging what would fall under there and the 41% increase.
So, okay. I think for that, I think... So right now, we have a big cost because a school psychologist to do the contracted services is way more expensive than hiring our own. So hopefully, we'll be reposting in the spring for our school. I mean, the school site is still posted, but hopefully in the spring, we'll get that sort of bumped up a little bit and get some more candidates. We had three candidates, one... Two of which were overseas and wanted to do virtual, which just doesn't work for little ones. And then one of them actually just didn't have the qualification. So we haven't gotten any other applicants. And so that is a big expenditure here is that school psychologist. And so hopefully, we will get somebody hired and then we'll be able to really slash that contracted services quite a bit.
So this is like anticipated if we don't hire?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And knowing that people from overseas are applying, do you feel like we need to adjust the posting at all to let them know that it has to be in person? Or is that just a really random?
Yeah, I think they just apply for, I've seen it in other districts. I think there's people out there that just sort of apply for any that's available. The, the real problem is that in this area, there just aren't a lot of school psychologists. And, and it is more lucrative to do it as a consult, as a, you know, a contracted service than it is to be an employee at a school district. So, you know, hopefully, we can get, we can get some good applicants in the spring and be able to rectify that a little bit better.
Perfect, thank you.
Shannon, I'm gonna ask if next time we meet, you can give a little bit more information about line thirty-eight, the therapeutic services. We've taken twelve thousand dollars out to move it over to the Bright grant and yet we're still increasing it by eleven point three percent.
I couldn't absolutely guess that one, so I just wanna make sure I had time to get the figures.
And then do you have more?
I do have one more.
Go for it, and then I'll go.
Okay, one more. I noticed that with some of the staffing salaries, there are some significant increases. Are the, like, steps included and then possible projected increases in that? Okay.
Yes, so it is, any of the salary increases are based on estimated COLA and also include any steps and lane changes. Because through the contract, they have to let the main office, who lets me know, by the end of October if there's going to be any lane increases. So they're all, they're all in there. So we know who's moving, or budgeting for who's moving lanes and also for step increases.
Okay, perfect. That's all I have right now.
Okay. So, I'm gonna ask, again, line seventy-one, the transportation. And I'm not, that's our general transportation, correct?
Correct. Yes.
And so I just must be looking over the special education transportation.
That's line seventeen.
What line? Oh geez, right underneath it. Okay, so, and is that eighty-three thousand reduction because of the van? Can you, can either of you speak to that?
Yes, so that is changes from the elementary budget over to the secondary budget when students graduate out of the elementary school.
So where is, you know, how is it that we can see any cost savings with this van?
I think the cost savings with the van happened last year when we had budgeted for the van driver for this current FY twenty-five year. That was when we went from two hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars for FY twenty-four down to the budget of a hundred and three thousand two hundred forty for FY twenty-five this current year.
And Amy, maybe you can chime in. But Amy and I have been looking at the van and there is certainly a cost savings to it because the going rate for van pool transportation is three seventy-five a day. Is that correct?
Three fifty.
Three fifty a day. But the challenge is that we can't right now utilize it for as many runs as we have students who need a van because of the timing of their programs is the same. And so we just can't get that one van everywhere it needs to be. Because in theory, right, we would like, if there's five kids that need transportation, we'd like them all on our van for the maximum cost saving. But that just isn't possible with the school schedules and where they need to be placed. So we're, right now, we're looking at a savings of three seventy-five a day at a minimum. Is that correct? Because we're saving that route.
Yes, that was, and that's the difference between, I don't know. That's the difference between what Caitlin was talking about last year. That's where that drop off was. We currently are using the Irving van for one student who's being transported. And then the drop off from this year into next year is because the, the student will be already at that school in, with regular transportation for seventh grade. So that won't be a cost that we'll have to incur next year for van pool.
So then would the other student go on the van?
We could put a different student.
Then we could put a different student on the van and it might be even, we could figure that out. I think the, the problem right now is it's hard to exactly determine which student we could put on a van. I feel like we can say, yes, we will put a student, at least one on a van. But which one is hard to tell at this point because there are some things in flux and kids are moving around. So, but yes, I would, I would expect that we could put either the other student or a different student on the van and, and continue to have that cost savings.
And do you determine who rides the van on distance, on needs, on schedule?
Um, I didn't this year. I sort of inherited it and I've been looking into seeing if there's better uses of it. Van pool doesn't charge by the mile, they just charge by the run. So you could literally have a run that's a mile that costs the same as fifteen miles. So that savings isn't really, isn't a factor. But like Shannon said, I am working with the, to the placements that students are at to try to see if we can finagle start times, even just, you know, here and there, just a couple of minutes at a time so that we can get two students on that van. Because I think that would be obviously the best use of our, our resources. But right now, it's just been tricky to do.
So if we aren't able to have multiple students on the van and we have a close route and a far away route, I would like to suggest that we use our van for the close route, put less miles on our own van if the cost is going to be the same.
Um, sure, that is what is currently happening. It was, yeah, that is what's currently happening. Yes.
Okay, and so going forward, we use kind of that same thinking of.
Keeping in mind, it won't always be in our control though because we have to work with van pool about what routes they have.
Sure.
Availability for, but certainly that's our preference. Yeah, absolutely.
Let's not put the violence on our own van. So just to, just to follow up with that. So right now, we have budgeted twenty thousand two twenty-two. Are you saying that then if you maneuver the people around, there could be even a cost savings on that? Or no?
I believe there could. I would, I would need to look to see what else we are paying for special education transportation in that line. But certainly, if we could move the bulk of our transportation to the Irving van, then I think that that could, that could decrease. I don't think that we can budget for it to decrease at the moment, but I think that we could certainly continue to have conversations about that and may end up being pleasant losses.
And so I just heard five minutes ago from Gil Montague, the regular education tuition rate for our secondary students this year is sixteen thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars. The special education tuition rate is forty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars. However, I think we only have technically point five-three special education students at that tuition rate.
Do you mind saying the first number again?
Sixteen thousand six hundred thirteen.
Perfect, thank you. And that's general ed?
Yep. I don't think I'll change numbers in the budget very much because it's pretty much the same number as she gave me a week ago. But this is just confirmed for this year.
And how, was that, that we have like, how many did we have projected to go to school next year?
It's gonna be more than this year, I'll give you.
I think there's fourteen in the class of the sixth graders. So I don't know how many of them end up there, but we have fourteen in the class.
I just didn't know how many we were budgeting for.
So we're budgeting for fifty-two students next year, an increase from forty-seven this year. Wait, no. Forty-five point four seven this year, increasing to fifty-two next year based on a relatively small graduating class and a larger incoming class.
Assuming that they all go to term.
Okay, so current is like forty-five, projected would be forty-two, or fifty-two, sorry.
All right, does anybody have any other questions? We'll keep looking at this.
If you have any questions between now and the next meeting, just send me an email. I'll, I'll answer and have some more time to kind of look deeper in depth than anything and let you know if there's any changes between now and the December meeting.
And I did make note of your questions regarding line twenty, thirty-eight, or on therapeutic services and the copier. So we'll make sure we have answers to those for next time.
There's also on fifty-five, it seemed, I don't know if there's an anticipated cost coming, although it's stayed the same, but it still seems like it's.
What line?
Fifty-five. It's just budgeted higher than we've ever really used. So that's another one that I don't know if we're cushioning just to make sure it's there or if we think we might need it. But that was just another, I know we're like staying the same. There's no technical in, or, you know, specific increase, but do we need to keep it at twelve?
That's a good question. I think also, we've been able to use ESRA money for technology in past years. So it's a, it is a good question and I'd love to check in with Tom and say, now that we don't have that other source of funding.
Right. And do we need new, you know, devices or kind of update stuff? So, okay, perfect.
Can you show us where that, where that line is in our current budget? I see a line that says technology, maintenance, supplies, but I'm not sure that that's the same.
I'd say it's got slightly different wording, but I can look in and tell you exactly which one.
Does it say twelve? It is in, it's under field trips and programs instructional technology, twelve thousand.
Yep. Okay, so, so far, we've used two hundred and eighty-two dollars.
But we, but we've encumbered some, so we just might not have those invoices yet.
We've encumbered three thousand. Yeah. Okay, but still, I mean, you know. I do wonder, I agree with you, I wonder if twelve is what we really need.
May I ask another question?
Sure.
Of the, the increase of about seven students, is that right, for forty-five to fifty-two anticipated? And that's like hundred and twelve, hundred and fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand apiece, give or take a little. Is, is that increase of a hundred plus thousand included in the budget that ends up with three point four percent decrease?
Yes. Yep. Gil Montague's been really great in their communication, Joanne Blyers, and kind of kept me updated to, we've communicated what numbers are in the sixth grade and what numbers are graduating. And so before this budget was made, we had a pretty good estimate.
Thank you.
Next, next month, Caitlin, can you give us a, an account of what's in the revolving account for the food services?
Um, I can, but you'll have to give me a few minutes.
No, no, next month.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
I mean, if you can do it right now, that's fine, but.
Okay, I could try.
Next one, I think next one is fine, yeah. Okay, does anybody have anything else? All right, Caitlin, did you have anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you.
All right, up to the principal's report.
So it is in your packet, there's an updated enrollment of one hundred and twelve students currently. Recent events, the Veterans Day Assembly with fourteen veterans attended. Many of our students took part in the assembly by leading our distinguished guests into the gymnasium and giving speeches. The chorus sang, speaking to the crowd on behalf of all veterans worldwide. A couple of veterans gave speeches and thanked our students and community for their recognition of Veterans Day. Upcoming events include conferences, which are going on, or going on even this evening. And we have our Thanksgiving recess coming up next week. Ms. Gannon will begin on the second. And then Common Jobs Professional Development, which is going to be hosted at EES on December eleventh.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
Thank you. I attended the Veterans Day thing and I applaud the people who set this up because it's more than just kids saluting a flag and singing a song and that's Veterans Day. It gives kids an opportunity to actually relate to a veteran or two and, and keeps it on their mind, so it's not just one day. So thank you for setting that up, truly.
Thank you for attending. All right, moving on to the Irving Teachers Association report, that was in our packet. So these things will all be on the website, correct, Shannon?
Correct.
Do you want me to?
I don't.
We are good. I think, I think we're good. And anybody who wants to see it can see it on the, on the website. Report from Pi. I think, I'm sorry, before you say that, I think that's, you know, moving forward, I think, you know, just to keep our meetings timely, any reports that we get, you know, we can kind of highlight quickly, but I think we don't need to read word for word. They'll be on the website, oftentimes they're here if they're, if they're something important, but, yeah.
Yeah, I was just scanning through it real quick. So special ed teachers and related service providers are continuing to learn about the new IEP and attending meetings there. They have parent teacher conference, they mentioned parent teacher conferences that are happening this week. Next month, Elizabeth Disorder and Leann Loomis are signed up to share about the Bright program. And they have their negotiation team voted on. So that was kind of their quick updates. Did I summarize, okay?
Yep.
Oh.
Pi.
Yep. Onto, I got, I got some tabs going on. So we met on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth at six PM virtually. And we had school council elections. So parents were able to log on and click on a link electronically through a Google form. And we had to rank the parents, or people had to vote on what parents they wanted part of the school council. The hope is that eventually, everyone can participate. But with school council, the ratio has to be the same for parent to teacher. And so as they are working on which teachers are gonna be involved, they needed to know out of the parents that were interested to have this vote happen. And then if they got the same number of parents to teachers, all of the parents can be involved. But if they only had one teacher and then the top parent that was voted on would be on school council. So that's kind of how it worked. And so meetings will start and there'll be more information about school council once Beth starts. So we're excited to see updates and what comes of that. And additionally, we are gonna do the calendar. Um, and additionally, we are gonna do the calendar raffle again this year, so I have them, and I'm currently putting them in envelopes to get ready to be sent out. So, those will be sent out before Thanksgiving break, and so just keep an eye out for those. And our next meeting will be December second at seven P M on Google, and all are welcome, the link will be in the newsletter.
Great. Thank you. Um, the Budget and Personnel Committee need, uh, report? Have a report for that?
Mark was there last night.
Mark was there last night. Uh, they voted to recommend the budget to the Joint Supervisory Committee, which passed at JSC. We do not have any other meetings scheduled for this year unless there is a reason to that comes up.
Okay. Joint Supervisory Committee report, um, I know we've, so our next meeting is July, not July, uh, January thirteenth. Do you have anything else to say for that?
Sure, the, the real topics where the superintendent's calls were presented, and they are forming a um advisory committee to take a look at the Collins Report and determine... Yeah, on um efficiency practices within the um union and um prioritize for the superintendent what areas they would like to see um some of those suggestions, suggestions um implemented. Um, so they'll, they will be looking for one person um from every town to serve. Um, I believe Mark has volunteered for Irving.
Okay. I wasn't sure if he volunteered or he was bringing it back.
Yeah, that's what I, it wasn't true either, because he did write up a little something.
They, they will be looking for that, um, and I know um Steve um Blinder will be reaching out once those names come forward. So, it might be on this committee to send a name forward to him about who would...
Okay.
Um, serve, and they're not looking for that to be a, it'll be a continual um uh group for the remainder of the year probably, but I'm not sure it'll be a permanent subcommittee type of group that will be for them to decide.
Okay. And Caitlin and Shannon will both be a part of that conversation as well, from like budget perspective and needs perspective and stuff like that, so it won't just be the members.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be a part of those meetings so that we can have clarity about what their, their priorities are.
Um, and then we voted on the budget, and then just provided some updates, and I think that was pretty much it.
Okay. All right. Um, so now we're up to surplus equipment update, I'm assuming that's this list.
That is that list.
Okay.
Um, there is, it has been, I'll be frank, a long time since surplus was um really examined, and so this is our first kind of, of look at um what is surplus. I don't know that this is an exhaustive list yet, um, but um asking, you know, the, the tech and the custodians to try to dive into that and become part of our practice, um, and so this is where we're at initially.
So, where is all this living right now?
In the storage.
In the containers.
Oh. Okay. Do we know the last time some of this has been touched?
A long time.
Okay. And so, we're paying for those storage containers out there monthly, is that true?
Yeah, I think it's a hundred and forty-one dollars a month, and it's um...
I'm not sure it's used exclusively for this, so it's used for other things that need to be stored, so I'm not sure even if we clear this out that we'll be able to get rid of that. We may be smaller, I don't know how that works, but it is not exclusively for surplus, which has made it a little bit time consuming to go through, because we're still developing a system of like, where is surplus and having to look through that, but we are embarking on the process.
And so, are your, is your intention to request that this become certified surplus to be disposed of?
Um, it is my request, I'd like to wait for the new principal to, to come on board, and I'd like to see if there's gonna be anything added to the list, so we can do one.
I mean, it does, you, you, you can do more than one, it's, it's okay.
Right, I know. Um, but I'd like to be efficient.
Okay.
If we can. Um, so that is the update, and um we'll probably have further updates as the, you know, obviously now that we're gonna identify where the surplus is, then we'll take the next appropriate steps to dispose of it.
Can I ask at our next meeting, or next time this is brought up, if it could be denoted whether these are usable items, or whether they're broken and they're gonna become trash? It makes a difference. Sure can.
Yeah.
Yeah, the...
Extra set of school plans.
We may, we may need those, but when it comes time to do, we may want that.
We may not want to get rid of those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, okay, perfect. Do we think that it's worth looking at what else is in there and what that is used for, and if what it's being stored?
With more than one.
Needs.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think the first step, I think certainly, but I think the first step is just identifying what is the stuff that is surplus and we don't need, and then we can look at what do we have left and what's the best economical way to store that.
Yeah, 'cause I feel like we've had those for a while, and for the amount that we've paid, we probably could have a shed the same size that could have been paid for, you know, by now with this, so, or, you know, if what, some kind of storage um option, if it's, needs to be permanent, or if we just need to get it out of here.
All right, so the rec commission, committee has requested the basketball, I mean, the gym for the basketball program, and um I saw the emails, I saw the um form being filled out. Do you want to say more than that?
Yeah, um, just that we have basketball skills starting up again, um, obviously, um, my name's Tom, new chair as of like a month ago.
Congratulations, yes.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so it's basically, it's gonna be, you know, after schools, um, it hasn't been years past with Saturday morning games, based on what the schedule is, that comes from the league. Uh, we won't have that until all the teams are finalized throughout the entire league, if it's, if any, if soccer's any indication, the basketball, it's gonna take a little bit. It took them a while to put all that together. Um, but we have four teams, um, all the way from, you know, kindergarten through sixth grade, um, and so we have multiple practices a week, and just looking to get the approval to use the gym for it.
I mean, this, we've done this for years.
Yeah. So, we, we chatted um earlier, and so the processes, it actually gets approved at the building level, um, and so we're, we are on the same page. I am, uh, I did rec for many years, um, and uh certainly understand the value of it, um, and I will work with Beth and with, to, to get a schedule that, that works. Um, it will require, and we had a frank conversation, some flexibility, because we don't necessarily have building staff on a Saturday.
Yep.
Um, and even though we can offer overtime, I can't mandate it, um, so we may have to be flexible about how to get you in the building and all that.
Absolutely.
But um, we'll have ongoing conversations um with Beth and with Eric, um, and we'll, we'll work out a system that will work.
Yeah.
I'm a big believer in that this is a community building, um, and if I want all of the town to be vested in its maintenance and improvement, I have to make sure that there's access, so um we, we've talked informally, I think it was already on the agenda, but we will work to get that approved at the building level.
Awesome.
We do deeply appreciate the fact that you are willing to work with us, so that we can utilize the building for the good of the children.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. I mean, we, we, we can take the vote in that we are recommending it, as Shannon said, it'll be approved at the buil, building level, but um, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the um Recreation Committee using the gym for basketball, after school for practices, and Saturdays for games.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Sorry.
No, I was just, no, I was just gonna tell that we, we had already made an arrangement to follow up about what that will look like in practice.
Yep.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck on your basketball season.
Thank you.
Dan, did you want to vote on that?
Oh, I thought I did, yes.
We, it kind of got a little, just to be clear. All right, and then we have a presentation, um, this was an addition to our agenda, Special Education Programming Proposal.
This is Amy Langton, I'm not sure how many people know Amy, but, yeah.
I'm the Director of Student Social Services, I started in um July, so um I'm happy to be here. Um, so, um, this is a proposal for a special education program here at Irving Elementary School, um, that would work with, um, that would provide services for students um who either um have autism, or who have a developmental disability that requires specific programming. So, I will get into more of the specifics, but um I started to think about the why, um, why this is really important to me, and why I think it should be important to um the Irving School. Um, I think that first we, um, first of all, we put the needs of kids first, um, that's always our priority, um, and we need to be working towards what's best for each of our students. Um, I think the next thing that we need to be looking at is using building resources for the most benefit to our students, and then last but not least, I recognize that it's part of my job to be fiscally responsible with the money that each, that town provides to the schools. So, that's the why. Oh. Thank you. Okay, all right. Um, so, um, you know, when I'm thinking about um this proposal, I'm envisioning those kids in my head. Um, I know that it's a little bit difficult for um you to not know the students and to not be able to see their little faces in your heads when you're thinking about this program, um, but this is the, the why of, of why I'm putting this proposal forward. Um, so as it stands right now, we have three students um throughout the union um who have autism or developmental disabilities, um, who are placed in public schools, not our own public schools, due to the need that um for a substantially separate program um that their homeschool could not provide. Um, each district is paying tuition for those students, and right now, two of those students are from Irving. Um, there are also three or four additional students um with autism or developmental disabilities throughout the union, um, who have needs that are not being met in their current school, and will need a different placement, either in a different public school or a private day school. One of them is from Irving, so this is not, um, you know, um, this may be an issue, it currently is an issue that we need to address one way or the other. Um, the other piece is that um in surveying um our current preschool programs and kindergarten programs, um, we have students who have significant disabilities, who may in the future require um a substantially separate setting um as they progress through school.
Can I just ask a clarifying question, just so numbers in my head make sense?
Uh-huh.
So, right now, from that top bullet, there are two from Irv, that would be in Irving that are currently out of district placements right now?
Yes.
That you, with this program would bring them...
Back to Irving.
Not yet. We're not, we're not at that point yet.
But if we were to have, that's the goal of this program?
No, the goal is to prevent a student from leaving.
New students.
Yes, a student that we have in Irving, prevent the student from going, having to pay to go out of district right now. Um, the students who are currently out of district because of their situations, that I don't really want to say publicly, but I could certainly explain. Um, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be good for that student to, to come back into Irving. Um, however, um, we do have a student who needs a different program, and so whether we create our own um for the student, or whether we uh send the student to a different placement, um, that's where we're at right now, and so it's just where, figuring out where we are going to spend our money, and whether or not we're creating a program um that would provide what the student needs, or whether we're going to look elsewhere for, for programming. So...
If I could just chime in, so I think we're looking, right, there are a variety of reasons a student might go out of district, but currently, there are two, four in the union as a whole, but two that are Irving students that had this program been developed and in place, would be eligible for it. So, I think it's just trying to give a picture of the impact it could have in, in a longitudinal...
Okay.
Kind of way, if that makes sense?
Okay. Yeah, I'm just very...
If this program had been in place uh two years ago, then those students might not have needed to go out of district. I think that's a better way of phrasing it.
Okay. And then with the three or four additional students that are within the union, is the, and if this is later, you can tell me to stop asking questions. The, our need in Irving is one, however, in the union, there are others, and it, would there be a possibility to open that availability up to those students in the union to support?
It's coming. It's coming. No worries.
No worries.
No worries, no worries. Um, so then, just to expand that a little bit to why it's so important that we create um our own, or that's why this is the proposal to create our own program, um, the, our local public schools have fewer and fewer spaces for students from other districts, because their own needs are so great. Um, we, um, I'm, in looking for placements for students in other districts, um, there's just not room in other places, because the, the own, their own um needs are so great. Um, there's lots of small schools in the area that don't have programs um like this, that are looking for other programs. Um, the costs for programming um is on the rise, if a student goes to a private day school, um, last year, the increase was a fourteen percent increase in the tuition for those schools. Um, and just sort of, you know, again, in this area, there are other districts asking if we have programs that we could um tuition students into, um, that we don't currently have. Uh, just again, uh, um, information about the cost of the out of district programs, um, so if the student um goes to a public school program, the tuition for that ranges anywhere from fifty-eight to sixty-eight thousand per year per student. Um, and if a student has to go to a private day program, that range is from seventy-five thousand to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year. Um, and then the transportation costs um are, like we said earlier, about three hundred and fifty dollars a day, um, for students if they're not riding the Irving van. So, um, we're looking at a significant um cost savings if we can keep a student here in our own district.
Can you, um, and again, if this is coming up, I'm more than welcome to say so. I'm just wondering, for people that might not understand, can you explain why, if a, if a student of ours is going to another public school, not a private school, but a public school, why they aren't considered just a school choice student, and why they are able to be charged fifty-eight to sixty-eight thousand?
Yeah, so, um, the process for school choice is that, um, at the beginning of every, um, or, or in the spring, planning for the following school a year, um, every school gets to decide how many school choice seats they open up. Um, and so, they can open them up per grade level, they can open them up for um, um, for specific programs, they can open them up for a variety of different things. Um, but that process is um, isn't mandatory, it's um a lottery system, so, you know, if six, if there's two spots open in, in fourth grade, and there's um six kids that apply, then, you know, four kids are sort of out of luck, and two kids get to go, and it's not um necessarily that the, the right kid, you know, gets to go. So, it might not be the kid who um is on the autism spectrum that is selected for school of choice. Um, in this capacity, we're able to say, you have a program, you have space in that program, we don't have a program, or we don't have space, or whatever the situation is, um, we can pay you to provide those services to our student, because we can't. Um, the benefit to sending a student to um a public school rather than a private day, um, is not only the cost, but in a private day school, um, all the students there have special needs. In a public school, they don't, and so you have the opportunity um to be with peers without disabilities, as well as peers with disabilities, um, and the research shows that that's just better. The more that we can, um, the more that we can um integrate students um with and without disabilities, the better outcomes for everyone, and so, um, we prefer, we would prefer to set, send students to a public school, um, but even more than that, we'd prefer to keep them. Um, so that's really the difference between the school of choice and the tuition in.
And so then, therefore, if we created our own program and had three extra seats available, we could then go out and say, to other area districts, it'll be fifty-eight, sixty-eight thousand, and then we'll take your, your...
68,000, and then we'll take your students?
Yes, yes. So, the proposal for this program is that it would be a substantially separate program for students with autism and/or developmental disabilities. What substantially separate means is that most of the student's day is spent outside of the general education classroom, that there, the, the level of disability is so great that it really, that's the best place for a student to be educated, is in a separate setting. So, the proposal would be that it would, this program would be staffed a few hours a day by a BCBA, a few hours a day by a special education teacher, a full day by the RBT, that each student would have one-to-one support with either a paraprofessional or an RBT, and that the program would also have additional support from an occupational therapist and a speech therapist. The instruction would be specialized ABA instruction. There would also be social groups, speech groups, and also self-regulation groups embedded in the program. And then, we're proposing that this program be housed at Irving and having tuition coming in from other public schools, specifically other schools in the union. So, again, we have one student here in Irving. Other districts, specifically those in our union, have one or two students, and to combine them would make the best, the best program, the best educational environment possible for all of those students.
Amy, can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So, we're not, so say we don't have, say this is a program for five kids, and I know the answer, I'm just asking, so we have a program for five students, and the Irving has one, and the union has two, those would be the priority, right? So, Irving would be the priority, then other students within our union, and then if we had other openings, then we would open it up to surrounding public schools?
Right.
Thank you.
So, actually, you just said my next slide. So, the proposal would be for the remainder of this school year, that there's either three or four students in the program, one from Irving, and then two or three others from the rest of the union, and then moving forward, that we would have five or six students, six being the maximum number that we would have in this program. And again, first priority would go to students who are in Irving, second priority to students who are within our union, and then we would open up to the, the wider area. So, again, some of the benefits to this program would be that students can stay in their home community for a longer period of time. Students are able to integrate with their peers when they're able. A new program would expand our capacity for supporting students in Irving. We could draw in students from other districts, and then also the savings of tuition for those out-of-district placements. So, again, we're at the point where we have to spend money, whether it's to spend money to create a program for a student or to spend money to send a student to a different district to be educated. That's the point that we're at. Again, it's not, you know, hypothetical, if we had a kid, it's, it's, we have to do one or the other, right? Very shortly. So, in terms of the projected resources, I've listed what the need is, the availability that we currently have here in Irving, and then the anticipated cost. In Irving, we have a classroom available. We have the curriculum. In the union, we've already purchased curriculum for the students who are in, who require this level of programming, and that's about $325 per student per year. A special education teacher, we have in Irving, that could devote approximately two hours per day to this program. And then, you know, taking that salary, dividing it by the number of days, dividing by the number of hours, taking out two hours a day, multiplying by 180, gets you to about $22,000 of that teacher's salary would be spent on this actual program. The same thing with the BCBA that we currently have in Irving. The RBT we currently have in Irving would be, continue, would continue to work here and would work full-time in that program. And then, we would need a paraprofessional or an RBT for a one-to-one ratio to the students. So, you know, we have an RBT that would work with one student, and then we would need paraprofessionals for the other students that would be a part of the program. And that cost is an estimate of about $34,000 per para. We already have speech teachers, OT, PT, that would be supporting the program, and the cost is, it's hard to say because it's all based on what the student's IEP calls for. And then, in terms of supplies, we would need some room dividers. We have some here at Irving, but I think we would use those as supplemental, that we would really want to start the program off with a solid set of what we really require. And then, just, you know, miscellaneous supplies of about $500, just for some program startup costs, if they require, you know, manipulatives for math, or if they require, you know, fidgets or sensory objects, just to have a little bit of a, a pot of money to pull from to be able to start this program up.
Quick question before you move on?
Yeah, sure.
And, well, no, you go to the next one, and then I see more numbers, so I have a number of questions that we do.
There's a lot more numbers. So, then, based on the slide before, the operational cost to, to operate this program, regardless of number of students in it, would be about $86,380. And then, we would add to that based on the number of students. So, then, it's $325 per student for the curriculum, and then it would be $34,000 per para, per student, minus one. So, because we have the RBT that's already a part of our Irving staff, we wouldn't need a para for each student, we would need a para for each student minus one, because we already have that one taken care of. So, with all of that being said, the cost for three students would be 155,355, which is almost $52,000 per student. The cost for four students, you know, would, would go up, but the cost per student would go down. So, for four students, it would be about $47,000 per student. So, based on that information, you know, the surrounding programs are charging a bit more, but our program cost isn't quite that high. And so, I would propose that we charge a tuition of $55,000. That if we pulled in tuition from, for two students, that would be $110,000. It would bring the cost for the Irving student down to $45,000. And then, that would be a savings to Irving, because again, we're talking about a student that would either be educated here for $45,000, or a student that would be going out of district to another program. That would be a savings of anywhere from $13,000 to $80,000 plus transportation, based on where we would have to send the student. If we bring in three students, that would be, that would mean that the program cost would be about $165,000. The cost for the Irving student would go down to just close to $25,000, and then again, it would be a bigger savings. Again, just a reminder that the costs are compounded over time, because we are fiscally responsible for these students through grade six. For some of them, we're fiscally responsible through the age of 22. So, if we send a student to, for example, the May Center, which is really a popular place for students with autism to go, that's $125,000 a year from now until they're 22. It's very hard to have students come back to a public school program. We have had success with that, but it's much more difficult to have students come back from an out-of-district program, rather than building our own and being able to support them without having to have them go out of district first. So, because we're partway through the school year, if we were able to get this up and running and starting in January, there's 103 days remaining. If you break the cost of the tuition up to, you know, the daily rate, we would be charging about $31,000 per student for the remainder of this year. If we hire, if we hired two or three paraprofessionals, pro-rated cost would be about $39,000 to $58,000 a year. That would be paid for by that incoming tuition that we would receive. The room dividers would be paid for by the incoming tuition, and those miscellaneous supplies would also be paid for by the incoming tuition. And still, with paying for all of those things, we would have anywhere from $23,000 to $35,000 left over. That would either go back into the Irving budget. We've also been talking to the town, and because of the, if we were to hire two or three additional paraprofessionals, the cost of the benefits, some of that money might need to go to the town to pay for benefits. So, that's a conversation that's begun already a little bit. And then, a timeline. If this program is approved tonight, obviously, if it's not, then we would extend the timeline. But if it were to be approved tonight, we would start right away this week with updating the postings for paraprofessionals to make sure we get those up and going. I would meet with the Irving staff to start to create those schedules and, and levels of service. We would start by ordering supplies, excuse me, and I would start to contact those families in the union who have students that would be a good fit for the program. So, beginning to have those conversations about, you know, we're starting this new program in Irving, I think your child would be a good fit, and having those conversations. The first week in December, we would start to arrange the physical space, we would plan the curriculum, and we would finalize the schedules and services. That following week, we would start to create the actual contracts, we would hold IEP meetings if necessary, finalize the physical space, and then interview and hire paraprofessionals. And then, right before the winter break, we would do tours of the program, making sure we had the IEP signatures, finalize the staffing, sending contracts out, and then be ready to start with students in the program on January 2nd. So, the big ask tonight is to have the school committee approve to the creation of a new special education program at Irving Elementary, and approval to hire those two to three additional paraprofessionals, again, noting that they would be paid for by the incoming tuition. So, questions?
Can we go back to the slides where there was the grid of numbers?
Yep.
If you don't mind, I'll go first, and then you can go first.
Is it this one?
Yep, it is. So, let's start at the top. So, I'm curious, what classroom do we have that is currently not being used?
We have a preschool classroom that has sort of gone through about 16 different iterations this year. I think most recently, it was a preschool classroom, but it's, it's been used for a variety of different things. In talking with David and also some of the staff members, we can, because of where the BCBA currently has a space, we could move her, she would be moved into that classroom, somebody else would be moved into her space, and so it would be a little bit of a shift, not affecting classroom teachers or grade-level teachers, but more some of those support personnel, and it would be a little bit of a shift, moving folks around. But we do have that classroom that would be freed up.
Okay, and so, so I'll start first.
So, I want to say first, before I ask too many more questions, I think this is a great idea. I think it's something that Irving definitely needs, but I do have concerns with your budgeting and your allocation of staff.
Sure.
So, so know that I'm positively, you know, in favor of it, but I don't, the numbers aren't quite adding up for me.
Okay.
So, first of all, you only have the special education teacher in there for two hours a day, which seems low to me, but, but, I'll put that aside for a second. The BCBA is already also allocated to the Bright program and to just other students that might need them. So, I feel like that's splitting that person up pretty, pretty significantly, to say that three hours a day are going to be in this program, plus whatever time they're allocated to the Bright program, leaving, I can't see very much time left for any other students that aren't in the Bright program or in this, but do require BCBA services.
So, what we are finding is that the Bright program has been really impactful for students who have trauma, students who have behavioral concerns, but it really isn't very impactful for students with autism or autism-related disabilities. And so, the, so the BCBA has not been spending time in the Bright program, she's been working with those other students who have a different set of needs. So, already, the Bright program has really been operated by the guidance counselor and the special educator, or the, sorry, the regular education teacher that's tied to that program, with some support from paraprofessionals and other staff coming in. The BCBA definitely consults to that program, but she really, as we're working through this, we're really finding that her skill set is best used for these students who require a different method of teaching, more that direct instruction, the ABA style where it's very sequential and very explicit, whereas the students in the Bright program really have more of a need for being educated in the same way as their peers, but allowing for more time for self-regulation skills and building up those skills in terms of powering through things and resiliency and those kinds of things. And so, really, what we're finding is that it really is two different sets of skills. And so, she is working with the student currently, who would be in the Reach program, and so it would be just that, it would be overseeing more students, but sort of the same period of time, if that makes sense.
Right, I wasn't suggesting the two programs were the same. I'm saying that in the presentation for the Bright program, it was made clear that the BCBA was an integral part of that program, and so, my, again, the math is, is, is just not adding up for me, if that is the case for that Bright program, and now, we're also allocating this three hours a day to this program, and there has, I'm going to assume there are other students that need BCBA services, plus testing, plus observations, plus going to meetings. I don't see how that is going to be able to be done by one person, all of those jobs.
Right, and what we're finding is that that, that person has not been integral to the Bright program, and not by any fault of her own. She's wonderful, and she does wonderful things, but her skill set is not the skill set required. And so, because she has such a different skill set, she hasn't been working in the Bright program. We thought at going into it, all of us did, that she would be this integral piece, and as we're going through, and as kids are getting added to the Bright program, it's really just a completely different skill set. And so, if we, if we continue to force her skills into the Bright program, we're not doing right by her, and we're not doing right by the kids. And so, it's been better to have her removed from the Bright program, spending more time with the students who are on the autism spectrum or who have these developmental disabilities. And so, currently, a big portion of her day is being spent by, with one student because of his level of need and because of, he needs her skill set. And so, we really wouldn't be adding more to her plate. We would be adding more students with more support services, but not really more time spent on working with kids with autism.
And I think they, and if you correct me if I'm wrong, made the adjustment counselor the Bright coordinator. I think originally, it was going to be the BCBA, but it is not, and so now, it is the adjustment counselor that is the Bright coordinator.
I can speak to that a little bit. I think, and I wasn't, I mean, I saw the presentation, it's, and I think that was our intent, but in, in seeing the Bright program sort of matriculate into the school year, the extent in which we had budgeted her time to be in that program just has not been needed for its success. And so, it really is about allocating and leveraging her time that's available in a way that might be beneficial in building a new program. If that makes sense? So, so, other than the Bright program, this, this person with three and a half other hours a day, not really, because there are lots of other things that take her, this person's day, can allocate three full hours for this program and isn't needed for, again, for other students that don't, aren't in one of the two programs, or meetings, or observations?
Yes, we, between the RBT, the paraprofessionals, the two hours of the special education teacher, and the, the three hours of the BCBA, we feel, and I've spoken with her, and I've spoken with, with David as well, we feel like that really is going to work with this, this level of resource for that program. We really think that, that it is a feasible rotation that would be happening, you know, support from OT, from speech, you know, we'd have sort of a schedule so that we make sure that everybody gets their prep time, everybody gets lunches, and really, that we're there sort of rotating their level of support within the program. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't have concerns about overtaxing someone. I wouldn't put this proposal together if I wouldn't put this proposal together if I thought that it would stretch thin our resources. I think it's just a better allocation of our resources.
Okay. And, and so, again, too, I feel, I'm going to ask the same question of the speech, the OT, and the PT. We've, we've got a lot of things that are, you know, being outsourced at the moment, and speech needs, I don't know if the school's different than every other school that I've worked in, but the speech needs have been exploding recently. And to add, not just the Irving child, because that child's already here, but outside children onto the caseload of the speech, the OT, and the PT, with our Irving students already with high needs.
Yeah, so I've looked at-
They've signed off that their schedules will allow for this?
Uh, yeah, I've spoken with the, with the OT, and I've had a brief conversation with speech. But looking at the speech schedules, we have two speech therapists here, and we definitely have the resources to be able to support these students. The OT, when she heard about this program, offered to, to be a part of it, because she really believes in that, in supporting these students in this kind of way. And so, again, you know, we have these students, we have the ability for these students to get all of their services within this building. The PT already sees students. She might need to shift some of her time.
Right, because she shared.
Because she shared, and so she already has them in her schedule.
I'm mostly concerned about the speech. I know, in the past, the speech has not even had prep time sometimes, because they're back-to-back-to-back students. And I'm concerned about adding some fairly significant speech needs onto that caseload, even with, with two speech pathologists here. And then finally, are, are we fully staffed at the moment with the paraprofessionals?
We currently have one.
We have one opening. However, it's not currently, we're, we're currently able to support all of our students without filling that position. So it's not been a position that we, that is needed at the moment. So we have one open position, but it's not something that we're sort of scrambling for. We have figured out, I think, partially because of the role that the Bright program has taken for some of these students who really required a lot of paraprofessional support. I think the way that we have staffed some of the classrooms and working with the Bright program, we've really eliminated the need for that paraprofessional. So we haven't been actively searching to fill that position.
Is the, is the position still open on school spring?
I believe it still is.
Is that the alternative site, full-time position?
No, that one's been filled. That one, we should take that down, because that one has been filled.
Because that's all I'm seeing on the website.
Um, I believe, actually, I believe that because we weren't looking for it, Chinam, was that a conversation that we had with David, that he wasn't going to re-up it because we-
He was not right now, because currently, we were able to meet student needs without filling.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I think that's great. And if that's, it's, it's very optimistic to think that we're going to have two to three hires in, in December slash January. I, I mean, if we can do it, I think that's wonderful. Certainly be the unicorn within the districts around here. So, all the power to you. I just, I'm concerned with the staffing levels and, and the ability to hire staff in the timeline that you're proposing. I really, I'm very, very concerned. And therefore, the costs go up, because if we have to hire more staff to staff this, you know, we won't, we won't see those savings. Coupled with, the town side of benefits are very, very, very expensive. And we had a long conversation at the end of last year and coming into this year about hiring, and about the town being able to absorb the cost of those benefits. And here we are, looking for two to three positions. So, again, I want to say, I, I, I think this is a needed program. I just think that this plan tonight is very optimistic and aggressive, and I'm not sure that we can, in reality, make this happen in the timeline, in the setup that, that you're presenting.
Yeah, so the one paraprofessional position that's open, the town has already budgeted for those, for those benefits, and it hasn't been used for the, the current portion of the year. When we spoke briefly with the town, we've had a couple of emails going back and forth, you know, they, they were, had questions that obviously need to be answered. I think some of what we're thinking about, one, is that the, one of the students in one of the other districts in the union has a paraprofessional already working with them. So whether or not for the remainder of this year, that para goes with the student, and we discount the price of the tuition, or, you know, we figure some arrangement out, I think that could be a possibility, or a possibility of resigning from the other school and being hired in Irving. We could talk about those kinds of things. I think the other, the other issue is that bringing those students in will give us more than we need to run the program, and therefore, we could contribute to the benefits for those other, for the, the paraprofessionals. So I think that, you know, I also think that we, I, I don't want to start a program that's not fully staffed. And so if I don't think that we can get staff that would be supportive of this program, you know, I don't, I, I wouldn't have put this forward if I didn't think that we would be staffed.
And also, we have had conversations, and Caitlin was a part of that, with Jen and with Brian, just to gauge, you know, that, listen, we're, we're thinking about, this is, this is something we have to, this number is going to continue to grow. And so, if we don't, beyond, and I don't want to discount, like, that this is the right thing to do for students, to keep them in their school community, and it just aligns with, you know, what we believe to be true about students and belonging to their home community. But fiscally, we have to address frankly, and I know we had a conversation, that this has been on the table, we, we've had a couple people as we've been, you know, having conversations that have said, you know, "We've been talking about this for ten years in this district", you know? "We're glad somebody's, you know, looking into what those steps are. I hear you about the ambitious timeline." I had cautioned Amy, I said, "Listen, I love the ambitious timeline, because it puts kids first, and, right, we want kids to be where they need to be, like tomorrow." So I did tell her, you know, you know, "Be, be aggressive, but recognize that we may have to take a step back to make this happen. But in full disclosure, some of these student needs can't wait. So as we're building this program, just recognize, it may mean, in the best interest of a student, that they are placed out of district, and we may not get them back." And it doesn't mean the program does need to be built. I think it is, it makes not only, you know, is it the ethical and moral thing to do, but I do think it's a fiscally responsible thing to do, because this population is not going to diminish, and to build programs for them just makes educational and fiscal sense. So, you know, we have a sense of urgency. Amy's sense of urgency is, right, she's picturing the kid, as she talked about in her head. My sense of urgency, and Caitlin's with a little bit different hat, and no less empathetic and committed, but is like, what's the financial cost? You know, how do we, how do we leverage our limited resources? So, that's where we are, and we've had some of those conversations. And we recognize perhaps the vote is altered to, you know, say to pursue it, but not, you know, see what staffing is. I mean, that will be for the committee to decide. We're just presenting what we think is a educationally and fiscally responsible direction to pursue.
I have a couple of questions, comments.
Sure.
Oh, no, you're good. I've been writing them down, so hopefully I don't- So, current, currently, we have a student, we know that we need to take care of their needs.
Yes.
That it, you've given us two choices, which are clear.
Yep.
We do it here, or we outsource.
Yep.
So, I'm just trying to put the two scenarios in my head. We will not accept any other students without hiring staff first, correct?
Yeah, I, I couldn't start the program without having the proper staffing. And I think that the proper staffing is a one-to-one support, along with these other folks that are already in the program.
And then, part of that conversation is going to offer this to those other families, and even if they're interested. So if we were to, say, where we were, we were to approve it tonight, you then would call these families and say, "This is being proposed. Is this something that you are interested in?" If they say yes, then you know how many to hire. And then you would know, moving forward, what that program would better look like, and how many additional students and additional staff would be needed.
Right. So the process, because from their perspective, it really, it's an out-of-district placement, you know, regardless of whether they're coming to, you know, from Shutsberry to Levert, or shoots, or Shutsberry to Irving, or Shutsberry to Deerfield, right? It's an out-of-district placement either way. And so the process of that is that the IEP team decides that the, the student has this need that can't be met in the current situation. And so then, what we do is we start looking for outside programs. And so, the students that, the reason why I say three or four is because those are the students that already we're looking for programs for. So it's not like it's, you know, would be a surprise to a family to say, like, "Oh, what do you mean, you can't educate my student here?" These are already families who know we're looking for a different placement, including the student who is currently here in Irving. So, we already, these families already know we're looking for something different. And so, I haven't offered them Irving, because we don't have Irving yet. And so, you know, but I do know that when I contact some of the, when I've contacted both Frontier and Gateway, they don't have space for our students at the elementary level. And so, now I'm looking further away, and the reality may be that I can't find a public school placement, and then we have to go to a, a private placement, because the IEP team has already decided, we can't educate the student in the current situation. So that's, yeah, that's where we're at.
So then, if we're looking at this program and implementing it here at Irving, technically speaking, it, the cost to make that happen would be the thirty-five, oh, thirty-five, three hundred and twenty-five dollars for curriculum, the two hundred and eighty for room dividers, and the five hundred in miscellaneous supplies, because we already have a special ed teacher, and that teacher, this child, may or may not already be on the caseload, but this will be, you know, adding to that caseload. We already have the BCBA, who is already currently working with this student, and then we already have an RBT that's currently working with the student, and we don't need additional paraprofessionals or staff right now.
Correct.
With just one student. So if we approved it tonight and said, "At least start with our student, then we'll, you know, try to build it up from there," that could be a possibility.
Well, it's not because we can't have a program of one, because that's currently what we have, right? Right now, we already have a, we're, we're already trying to support the student with a program of one. That's not what's best for the student. That's not what's best for any student, is to have a program where they're essentially, because of their needs, they're with adults for most of the day. So the idea would be, is that we need at least one, or two, or three more students to effectively make a program that really is in the best interest of all students. I wouldn't, we're, we're not proposing to start with the one student that we already have, because that's what we're doing. If we only have the one student, we would have to send them to a different location, because we just, we, we, that's not what's best for them.
Okay, so essentially, even if we decided yes, it's all going to fall on if you can hire additional paraprofessionals to support those additional children.
And that might impact the rate in which we bring additional students into that cohort. So if we can only hire two RBTs, then maybe that program is only three for this year, and we're, or-
Right, but if we can't hire anyone, we can't have our one student.
Well, that would be a holdup to, to being able to develop the program, right? But we can't, we can't take that step to pursue hiring paraprofessionals without direction that, yeah, we want you to explore creating this program.
So then, my question is, how long of a timeframe do you have before a real decision needs to be made on, we've, we've tried, we've tried to hire, we're not getting anyone? Like, I'm thinking worst-case scenario. I'm really hopeful that we put this out, they, people see it, they apply, we're good to go. But worst-case scenario, if we're saying we can't run this program with our, with one child, what is that timeframe that you're allowing for yourself to get this implemented? And if it's not implemented by this date, we don't have a choice.
Yeah, I, I do think, so, I'm, I'm, I am, because of the situation that we have in, in the other districts, where we have one paraprofessional that is already working with a student that would be asked to come to this program, I don't foresee an issue with having that paraprofessional, at the worst-case scenario, we can't find anybody else, that paraprofessional working with the student in the program here. So my thought is that we already have an RBT, I think we already have a paraprofessional, and we would have those two students. So, my, my low bar really is those two students with the RBT and the, the one paraprofessional. I am, I, I think we can get the, at least one more, based on some of the other information that I have about other people that are looking in other, other places to come outside of where they're currently at. So I, yeah, I, I, I understand that it's helpful, but I, I think it's, it's hopeful with an understanding of some realism, too.
And then, the way that that's posted- Because it would be at Irving, could a para that's here want to be switched or apply for that? Like, how does that work internally? Is it just the same, so that-
It would work just like it did if we were posting a, a new paraprofessional.
Have to be posted.
Okay.
Yeah, so a person could request a transfer into the program, and then we would be hiring for a, you know, third-grade para, or whatever.
And then, the other question that I had was just a general, we're saying it's called the Reach program. I know for the Bright program, that meant it had to be called that, because there were a lot of attachments to that, there were other trainings and supports and everything else. So is Reach just like a name that you had come up with?
Yeah.
Or other association fees, trainings?
No.
Additional stuff for them?
There's none of that. I came up with it, and I-
Because I thought, I, does Deerfield, or someone? I've heard the name before, so I wasn't sure if it was-
Yeah, I just closed it, but I-
I just think it's intervention, early intervention. I think that's very confusing.
I Googled.
No, I can, I'll, I'll, I'll get out of this in a second and find it, because I, I did, I, I came up with it. It doesn't have to say the Reach program, if that's your other question, because I just came up with it. But I did, I should have put what I made the acronym for. I think I'm, Reaching Potentials, Reaching, Reaching Potentials, I think, is what I said.
Because when I Googled it, there is like, a Reach Autism Approach.
Yeah.
And there's other Reach programs, and so I wasn't sure if there was like, an association similar to the Bright program, where there's all these other additional things, or later on, we're gonna, you know, need all these requirements.
No, we may have to look at the name.
Right.
That was like, the working, the working title.
Yeah, I think that worked, yeah, it was just Reaching Potentials was the, the idea, and that was the, the name that I came up with.
What is the grade level that you're anticipating having in this classroom?
So we would need, there can be no more than forty-eight months within a substantially separate program. You can't have a student who is forty-eight months older or younger. And so, the students that have the potential for this are around that age. And I, again, because the incidence is so small, I don't want to get into those kind of details, but it's not, I will say that it's not for a group of sixth graders. This is something that would be-
You'd be anchored on the person that we have here in Irving, correct? The forty-eight months would be above or below the person that we have.
Absolutely, yeah, right, right. But, but, yes, and that that student is not sort of like a sixth grader that we're planning for this whole program, and they're leaving next year. This is a, a younger student who would really benefit from this program for many years to come.
I think that, what Caitlin said about the internal transfer also brought up a concern of mine, is just that, in the event that somebody does want to do that, we've created a hole somewhere else in the school. And once again, I'm so loving your optimism that you're going to be able to hire people, but the reality is that there aren't people out there necessarily then that, to fill that hole. So we are creating a hole somewhere else in our school that could not get, potentially wouldn't get filled, that would create a, a deficit in some other area of the school. So, again, I'm for this program. I am just really concerned about the timeline and the cost. So, if you have a person that you think could come with a para, and, I mean, my feeling is, let's start there, and then put feelers out to see if there would be contingent on funding. You know, you could put an ad out saying contingent on funding, and see if people are applying. I mean, if you're getting applicants, that seems- I mean, if you're getting applicants that seem viable, then I think that's a different conversation to come back to us with, but I'm, I'm very concerned.
Certainly, we're, so we're telling you, these are all the things that have to align. What we need is permission to pursue it. We are not going to, so you vote tonight and you say, we're in favor of this program, we, you know, say, go forward and try to hire an additional paraprofessional. If we can't do that, that's where the program will stall, if that makes sense, like, we, but we can't really do that until we have permission to take the steps to build the program, if that makes sense, what I'm.
I hear you, but I'm going, I'm, I'm pulling back a little bit further. I'm saying I would feel comfortable going forward with the program with our current staff that we have. And you're saying you have another school district within Union Twenty-Eight that has staffing that could follow that student over here. So we need no outside hire for the time being. So those two students could at least get up and going so that we meet the needs of our two students.
Right.
Then you can.
Well, it would be an outside hire, though, because that student, we're not gonna ask a school to pay fifty-five thousand dollar tuition and then pay for a para.
We do. We are. We are paying that. That's what that ad is.
But that's not what we're, no, but that is a different.
No, that's an out of district student with a paraprofessional that we're paying for.
It is.
So we're paying an out of district student.
Some district student. That, that is a, a possibility. I, you know, I, the, that is an anomaly, though. The other students that we have in different, in other out of district placements, we pay a fee and that's the staff that goes with them. I mean, the staff is already there, sorry. The staff is already there. So whatever we pay, we don't pay extra for other staff. That's an anomaly. And I didn't set that up, so I don't know the parameters of that or why that's happening.
But that would be the similar anomaly here. We don't have the staff currently. So if you wanna come, you've gotta bring your staff with you because we don't have the staff.
So then we would discount their tuition.
Are we getting a discount?
I, I can't set that up, what I, that wasn't set up under me and it wasn't set up under Amy.
I'm, I'm not blaming either one of you. I'm asking the question.
No, but I'm just, I'm being transparent that as a superintendent, I would not be paying tuition of fifty-five thousand dollars and then eating another thirty-five thousand for benefits and, and a paraprofessional. We inherited that, I'm happy to honor it, it's in the best interest of students, but it's not how I wanna build a program going forward.
Could I have a couple of comments?
Sure.
Just along the way. Mackenzie and Caitlin have different educational experience and skills than I do, so you see a different perspective that I don't see. What I see may be simplistic, but I see something that's best, a program's being proposed that's A, best for our student, best for another student or two that might come here. So we've got more than one student that needs, has those similar needs. I don't know if the needs are similar, but, you know, being together with three or four of them, people is better than just one. So I see it's best for the student first and not just asking other students. I see it's, if it works out here, if it doesn't work out, it just kinda stops, but if it works out as presented, it's best for the Irving taxpayer also. We could be sending an out of placement for a hundred and twenty-five or two hundred, whatever, a hundred and fifty thousand, we're keeping that student here. So my first blush was why would somebody pay fifty thousand dollars to send their special needs student here? Well, if this, if this is an out of placement for them, they could be sending an out of placement that costs them a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand, they'd rather come here. So I see it as, and the way you presented it, we're not hiring staff that's not paid for by tuition that's coming in or funds we already have. I know it's a less misunderstanding, we're not, if it came to me and said, we need an extra couple hundred thousand dollars to make this program work, I'd probably say, what are you talking about? But, but I don't see that. And maybe it's pie in the sky, and I don't know if it'll work, but if we don't try, you never find out. So I'm, I'm in favor of it because it's best for our student and other students who would wanna come here, best financially, because we, we could be incurring horrendously more expense. And, and there are some bumps in the road. I don't know if you can hire the people you need or shuffle the people around that you need, but again, I'm, I'm new, so I may speak out of turn, but I wanna stay in what I consider to be my lane as a school committee member and let the superintendent, the principal, the professionals handle, how do you make staff work? I mean, as I say, Mackenzie and Caitlin have different skill sets and experiences than I do, but I feel like, you know, we have a new interim principal, a new superintendent, and you have someone who's enthusiastic through the roof about, let's get this going. I mean, I, I see no reason to not support it, although I see there can be some bumps in the road and you'll have to deal with them as they come, so.
I do think Mackenzie's points are, are valid and straight on. We might not be able to find paraprofessionals. That, that's a real concern and that would limit our availability and as Amy was transparent, we're gonna have to make decisions about these students. We can't go until May, right? That's not in their best interest. And that might be a barrier. We might be back here in January saying, listen, we had this great plan and now the discussion is, do we wanna try to build it for September because we just couldn't staff it yet? But, you know, we're advocating for the opportunity to try. And we, and we might be back here. Mackenzie is very right.
Don't make me the dupe and gloom person! I am for this!
I'm really not. I do appreciate, that is a real, I mean, she knows in her principal role, it's hard to fill those roles.
It really is.
We might be back here, but we sorta need that seal of approval to move forward and see, is this something we can get going?
But it sounds like with what we have, there are a minimum of two. It's the additional hires that might be for those additional students, but if we can figure out that other school and who's gonna be with that child, but it sounds like you're pretty confident that we can pull that extra staff member. We have the two, we have the, like, that sounds like solid, you know? I think I was just worried about the timeline. If we couldn't have one and we weren't really positive about two, then we'll be back here and then how much is that gonna cost? So I, I appreciate all of this information. I think the presentation was great and, yeah, it all seems to make sense. So I am ready to move forward with approving the special ed programming proposal. If it needs to say something different, let me know. But that's my motion.
So just to clarify, are you, are you proposing the full program where they go out to hire and all of that? Or are you proposing the, take the two students with the staff that we have available right now? Just, just so I'm clear, what you're proposing?
Do we need, like, I'm, I feel like we have to move forward with the two and post to possibly take more.
Okay, so you want, you want the whole staff?
Like, I'm, yeah, I'm fine with moving forward. I don't wanna delay our student and that other student.
You could make a, a motion that pending appropriate staffing.
Right, but I don't, if we think we can do it with two.
Right, it's been very clear that it's a one-to-one program, so it's pending appropriate staffing, which would mean we're gonna start with two and then if we can post and add a third, then, then we could add a third. I mean, that might give the.
Right, that's why I was looking for a little clarification. Like, so if I can just ask a question?
Yep.
Right now, we could staff this classroom with the staffing that we have currently for our own student and we're pretty sure a staff from another district with their student coming in.
Yes.
So we could move forward with just two tomorrow, say, right? And be successful. So we could potentially phase this in, start with that phase and then move on to a second phase of looking to hire more staff to.
What I would say, though, is that the other students who are potentially a part of this program can't wait for a phase in. I, I think that they would be placed in other places before a phase in could happen.
We've gotta get staff and that's just gonna take some time.
Right, no, but, but, but what I'm saying is that I think what Shannon said in terms of, you know, we may be back in January and saying, we tried really hard to get staff and we just couldn't. And so this proposal that we had is falling apart because of staffing. I, I just don't.
But does it have to fall apart? I'm trying to understand. I thought you said the bar was two and we've, we've met that criteria.
Yeah.
So we could at least run this program with two children?
Yes. What I'm saying, though, is that in terms of a phase in, I don't know that there's necessarily a phase in for the rest of the year. I could explore having other kids come from other districts outside of our union, but I think for our union kids, if, if we're not prepared to try to create a program that would accommodate all of them, the other one or two would not be an option for, for this year and may not be an option in the future because if we find a solid placement, their parents might not want to send them back.
But we'd at least have the two. We'd have our own plus one.
Right.
And I think what you mean by phasing in, sorry, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but is like, we'll, we'll start with our two and post a hire. And the phase part is hopefully we hire and we can add them in too, but not delaying it. It's gonna be determined, that phase or that kind of like add-in is gonna be determining who and how and the hiring process for those additional students. But I, I think what I'm trying to say is I don't want those other students delayed and waiting for staffing. Does that make sense? So like, let's move.
So it would be pending the appropriate staffing.
Yeah, so like, maybe phasing isn't the right word, but like, let's.
Steps.
Yeah, let's start the process, let's get these two going, let's post, and know that there might be different start dates because these children might be able to start right away and these children, it's gonna be determined on hiring and that's not in any, you know, it's out of control of everyone.
Can I?
Tell your friends to apply.
I'm, I'm contemplating seconding the motion.
Okay.
But I wanna be clear about our seconding. And it's, it's what, what I would prefer is that, that the motion is to proceed with this program. We know we have one, we'll probably likely have two, very likely could have three or four if we can get the, the hires. I would, if your motion is we just proceed along and try to get the whole thing done and just do it, and, but, but if you can't find the hires, you can't do that part of it, but if you can, just proceed along and do it. And if the motion is to approve the, doing that, then I would second the motion.
Yes.
Okay, then I would second the motion.
Knowing that we're not gonna delay anyone's start date, we're just kinda like going through and who we can get, we can get. And if it gets to the point where we're past those children, then being able to offer it, you know, to others.
And I'm sensitive to, to Mackenzie's concerns that in the hiring status of people around, it's sometimes a start to fi, hire somebody. If you can't find anybody, you can't find anybody, we can't control that.
Correct.
What we can control is we're asking them and we're trying.
Yeah.
And it'll be best for most students, and again, best for the Irving taxpayer because if we can get this program going here, we can have our students going here, other out of placements coming here, we would be the out of placement for them and it would pay for our program and perhaps more. We're not, we're trying to make a big profit off education, but we're at least.
It also keeps local students local. I mean, some of these students are getting, they're, they're high need students and they're getting on vans and they're going to out of district placements and they're spending two hours a day on a van and now you're talking about keeping students, even if they're not Irving students, in their relative region and, and that's good, that's good for kids.
I'm, I'm very good, very good friends with, with the guy that drives one of these vans and he takes people to the eastern part of the state, picks them up at six or seven in the morning and off they go. And they come home in the, in the afternoon rush, trying to get home, rush hour, and it's horrible for students, just, just on a personal level. So that's the motion to second, I guess.
Yeah, again, my, my, my only other part that I don't feel was a hundred percent addressed was the assurance from the town that they can absorb the benefits. I know you said you had some quick conversations, but I would like to firm that up that, that, because it's not just our funding that we're talking about, the town has to be able to fund the benefits, so.
And we will work, I mean, if there is.
I want assurance from the town.
Right, that we, and we will. We've already reached out to Jen and to Brian and we will work with them to make sure that we are not incurring an additional benefit that the town can't, will, that, this surplus will go back into that. And we've already talked and Caitlin's working with them about how to set up a revolving account for just that sort of thing so that the costs that are incurred with this would be paid directly from the tuition and that wouldn't necessarily come in to the school's operating budget. Is that correct, Caitlin?
Yeah. Okay, I mean, yeah.
And benefits would be one of those costs in that.
The benefits cost is significant. I don't know that we're really gonna cover that, but we might cover some of it, but I don't know that we would cover all of it because it is quite expensive.
But we still have one available.
One is already in the budget.
The two, we're still back to our two that we can run the program.
I think, I, I'm optimistic that we can run the two, one of which is our student. So that's really, at the end of the day, all I care about is our student is being serviced, you know, if you wanna talk about it that way. So, all right.
All right.
So that was your motion, it was a second? Any other discussion about it? So it'll be written as pending funding?
Pending funding, which will include the budget, the benefits discussion with Brian.
Yeah.
And we may be back in January saying we couldn't make it happen, but we'll, I'm not January, December. I will be here in December.
Well, I mean, you've gotta give some amount of time for them to, you know.
Okay.
Put the ad on.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we have to vote.
Oh, I thought that was the vote.
It is time for the vote.
Again, your optimism. Ready?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
All right, we're up to policy review and update. So we've got a bunch of first reads, so.
Can I move them?
Uh, y, y, sure.
Okay, I, do you wanna do them separately or all together?
I'm okay with them all together. Dean, are you okay with just?
Move them to second.
Move them all together?
Okay, so I will make a motion to move these first reads to a second read. We have ACAB, sex-based harassment and discrimination, CCB, staff relations, EBB, first aid, EEAE, school bus safety program, and EEAEB, drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers.
Wonderful. All right, so those will come up next week as a second read? Oh, sorry.
So she made the motion and I'll second it, but I have a question.
Sure.
Being new and perhaps some people watching don't know either, what is the difference? First read, second read, third read?
It's just the process they go through, so if, if, so read it the first time, see if you wanna change anything. Read it the second time, see if any of those changes we wanna make or if we wanna make new ones. It's kinda just like three different bites on the apple and then hopefully by the end it's the way, exactly the way we want it and then we will vote for it.
Okay. Now, if my. We have these acronyms here of EAEB, EIO, whatever all these things are, might be put down what they are, like for the PIEE. People, many people know what that is, but some don't.
Oh, that, that is an acronym?
Those are two different.
The other things are just, I have no idea why they're called that. It's almost like a page number, it's just the way.
It's like an organizational way that the policies are.
It's not an acronym for anything that I'm aware of.
Nope, nope.
Well, that's good to know.
No, I, and I, and I could maybe explain to you why they are called that.
Neither could I.
But we can add the wording for pie. So pie is partners in education at Irving. Partners in education at Irving, yeah. There's a whole explanation, but essentially it is like the PTO slash PTA, just a different name.
I kinda figured out that's what it was for the context, but asking is, doesn't make me feel bad, so.
Nope.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. So at this point, we are, unless anybody has anything else, we are done with our regular session, our open session. There is an executive session on here. At this point, I.
Could I ask one other thing about, and their other business?
Sure.
Recently, the Prestise Intercial Academy were asked by Gillian Bedine to have Irving participate in this program. It's a Dolly Parton sponsored program.
Oh, yeah, I saw that, yes.
Where there's a book a month sent to each child that's from zero to five years old for the family. Is that in some way coordinated through the school or is that Gillian Bedine with? with?
It was sent out to families in the cla, in the newsletter.
And Facebook, too.
Okay, so it's.
Yeah, so then they sign up for it.
Okay, but is that a school function that we know anything about?
We support it, but it's nothing that the committee has to go on.
Okay, good.
Yeah. So on the November 15th newsletter, it was sent out as a whole page and it let families know how they can sign up and information about it. So, yeah.
And it was also posted on Facebook, cause that's where I saw it.
Good.
Which I think is amazing, although I did try.
Thank you.
Said Irving still wasn't available, so I'm wondering if I clicked too soon.
Oh.
Okay, thank you.
I love that. Okay.
Are we going here to executives? I do not have an executive session need at this time unless you all do. We will need to be forming our negotiating team, but with Mark not here, I just feel like, I'm sure he would like to be part of that conversation, so we can do it at our next meeting.
Have we been given notice?
We have, I, I have not been given notice, although in the letter, it talks about in mid-December of being ready, but I have not been given notice. But since we know it's coming, you know, we'll probably form our, our committee next time. Not that that needs to be done in executive sessions, it's something we need to be doing. But then going forward, obviously, once we start negotiating, we'll have executive sessions more often. So, long story short, no executive session, so is the end of open session. Future committee, future school committee meetings, December 17th, 7 o'clock. The policy meeting happens right before, a half an hour earlier, so December 17th at 6:30. All are welcome and thank you for attending and have a good night. So we'll make a motion to adjourn at 9:25.
Second.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 9:25.
All right.
Dan seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do appreciate.